Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting for November 14, 2018. Call the meeting to order. Is that a roll call? Yes, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Care?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Ms. Torrance?
Here.
Issue?
Here.
Everybody join in. Let's believe. What do you think?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, all nation, our government, indivisible, literate, and justice are our.
Very difficult calls. I'll just... Does everybody get a chance to review our prior minutes? Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Minutes is presented. Oh, sorry. This is a motion. You have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Janus? Thank you. Now, we've got quite a few of these. We have the written draft discussion for appeals heard on the following meetings, September 12, 2018, and we also have October 10, 2018. First one is Appeal 2645, Mary Gosh... Gosh... Goshay... Goshay. Forty Beechridge Road in Scarborough. Anybody have any further comments, findings of fact, or anything to add? Question? Motion?
I have no further comments.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the Appeal number 2645 decision as presented.
All those in favor? Oh, excuse me.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Janus? All right. Appeal 2646, Christine Flaherty, 58 Ashwam Road. Does everybody have a chance to look at that? Any further comments, findings of fact, or anything to add? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve Appeal number 2646 decision as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Janus? Appeal number 2647, Maris LLC, 16 Ocean Avenue. Any questions, comments, or anything to add to the findings? Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept. Motion to approve the findings.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Janus? Appeal number 2648, Joseph G. and McGurk, Kunko, 12 Bedford Street. If I had a chance to review? Any further comments or questions or findings to add? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve Appeal number 2648's decision as presented.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Janus? All right. Appeal number 2649, Wildup Campground LLC, 39 Dunston Landing Road. Does everybody have a chance to review this? Any further questions, comments, or findings to add? Is there a motion?
Move to approve Appeal number 2649 as presented.
Findings?
Move to appeal findings for Appeal 2649 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Janus? Now, we're into October 10, 2018. Appeal number 2650, Lincoln Scanon, 39 Inglesides Drive. Everybody have a chance to review this? Any further questions, comments, or findings? Is there a motion?
Move to approve findings for Appeal 2650 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Janus? Appeal 2651, G and C LLC, 336 U.S. Route 1. Does anybody have a chance to review? Any questions, comments, or adding findings? Is there a motion?
Move to approve findings for Appeal 2651 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Janus? To our meeting. Okay. Right. Just keep doing as I'm told. Okay, first item on the agenda for actual appeals this evening is six-month extension request by Walter Wilson on behalf of Richard and Julie White for Appeal 2638, variance appeal 14 Ashton Street, approved on June 3, 2018. This is just, as I know, just kind of a matter of housekeeping to extend what we've already approved, so we don't really need to go through everything. Is that correct? Mr. Lockstaff?
As long as you find that the letter states reasoning that you feel is acceptable. That's all we need.
All right. Everybody have a chance to review the law?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
I think it's a reasonable request. They don't want to schedule work because the contractor does it pretty loaded up in the winter months, so I don't think it's unreasonable.
Any other questions, comments?
Agreed. It seems perfectly reasonable. We grant the extension.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the six-month extension.
Second? All those in favor? Janus? Very long. Appeal number 2652, limited reduction of yard size, residential appeal by Deuce and Eddie German, sorry if I messed up the names, 30% Berry Drive, assessors met UO21-070. Is anyone representing? Where are we sending them? You can just take the podium, give us your name, address, and who you are. We'll go with your appeal.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Siri Girong. My wife is Mrs. Girong. We are living in 30 Princebally Drive, One Point. And the reason we are asking to build a deck in front of the houses because we are planning to go for the front of the house. My wife suffer from lupus. And the reason we moving in there is because to be close to the water. She was being close to the water, but she cannot take the sound. You know, she cannot stay outside. That's why we ask to, we can have a small deck in front of the house. You know, it's eight foot by 26. And also to change the appeal of the house because the house was, when we get it, was kind of abandoned. Doesn't look to the neighborhood. We talked to the neighbors to see if anybody is, you know, and everybody is so happy to we are there, you know? That's, you know, what we ask.
Yeah, this one we have to worry about is the quality of the structure. I'd like to actually see one time. Sorry, I messed up the case. It would just be nice to see what Ashley is presenting. That's much better. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Don't ask me to move it again. I'm not giving you.
I can have a back point. All right. So you've given us the information. What we'll do is we'll go down for the questions. If you can just answer the questions as you had on your sheets. Do you have your sheets with you?
Yes, I got my sheet.
We'll just go down and answer the questions. Limited reduction of yard size. The existing, oh, actually, Mr. Lockstaff, anything to add or any staff comments you want to add on to this?
Yeah, as I put in my staff comments, the appellant originally submitted an application for the October hearing, but because of the design, the proposed design, it didn't meet the eligibility requirements for the 10-foot maximum production in front yard size. At that point, I contacted the appellant and we discussed what the limited yard size limitations were, and they resubmitted for this meeting. As I was reviewing the second application materials, they had redesigned what they were proposing to do in front of the building. However, because of the angle of the structure and the front lot line, only a part of what they're proposing to do would actually mean the 10-foot limitation on the production of the front yard size. So there's a little bit of a problem there, which I highlighted in my staff comment. I also couldn't determine whether or not the proposed addition to the building would increase the lot coverage to the maximum 20% or over 20%. That is probably a fairly simple calculation to do, but didn't have enough information to be able to determine that. And it wasn't spelled out on their site. So I think as the board reviews, that they just need to keep those things in order.
Global questions? What do you have?
The existing building structures on the lot for which the limited reduction yard size is requested were erected by July 3, 1991, or the lot is a vacant, non-conforming lot of record.
Yeah, it's not conforming, you know? Because the distance, you know, they require it. That's why we appealed it.
And we've got information that it was erected before 1991. I can verify that. Thank you. The request to production is reasonably necessary to prevent the owner or occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties that utilize the existing district. What's your answers to that, sir?
Yes, you know, we asked for this because it's some neighbors do they have even less than they have a deck in front of, probably was built before the regulations, you know? We understand that, you know? We are not trying to go that way, but we say, you know, it's that way we just ask for the eight foot in the front to be, you know, but this, the two houses down is a house to have maybe, you know, we have a big deck in the front and it's gonna be, or deck is gonna be a lot smaller than that house. And also a drift line in the house in the back end of the street, there is a house to take it and a field, I think that I must go and make it a room and then we say, you know, we're gonna give a shadow, see, we have, you know, we have in the process to prepare the exterior, but the roof. And we say, we waiting right now to see, you know, if we're gonna be allowed.
Okay. Due to the physical features of the lot and the location of existing structures on the lot, it would not be practical to construct a post-expansion, enlargement, or new structure in compliance with the currently applicable yard size requirements.
I don't exactly what.
It's just asking that you're asking for the appeal because it's not something that you can physically do for the existing structure?
Yes.
You need to have the appeal to.
Yes, we need to have the appeal first one. Submit all the information, the sign by the acting director.
Okay, but it's not practical to construct the proposed expansion within the guidelines that are there?
Yeah, it's not.
Okay. The impacts and effects of the enlargement, expansion of new building or structure on existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of a building or structure which conforms to the yard size requirements.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's gonna be make any difference, you know? Like I say, even the house and the block behind, they used to have to look for one deck. And this and all the two houses on the left side, they have also a deck and it's closer to the street.
Okay.
I think the one we asking is, you know, we submit the paper for 10, but they say definitely don't wanna go for 10. Then we, we are just expecting to be eight by 26.
Okay. The applicant has not commenced construction of the enlargement, expansion, building, or structure for which limited reduction of yard size is requested, so that the vote of appeals is not considered an after-the-fact application. You haven't begun any structure changes or anything.
No.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
One question I have, just with the provided materials. I don't understand that there are several iterations of this. Is the top sketch the most recent restrictive input projection?
He's asking you that question, sir.
Actually, this is like a draft plan, you know, and then the other one, did you see the next one? This is the acting, we give the last one to him because we wanna present exactly what it's gonna be. We also don't wanna do something and, you know, we wanna follow what we present. We don't wanna have any.
Okay.
You're not expanding the first floor deck, are you?
No.
It's bigger. It's bigger than the second floor is going to be. And the first floor, we have a deck like this, like 11, and we wanna go like eight on the second floor.
And in the same time, we wanna put in the first floor because it's rather loud.
So your question, Mr. Chair, or, sorry, Mr. Lockstaff, and your comments is just as far as to determine the square footage of the hall versus the square footage of the addition to the new deck.
Yeah, generally, when you do a project and you present a site plan and you're adding to the, adding to the structure, the footprint is the projection of the building to the ground. And they'll provide a calculation of existing lot coverage by buildings and then proposed lot coverage by buildings. And that wasn't there. And without the dimensions listed for, you know, the existing structure, it's pretty hard for me to determine whether it meets that requirement. That's what I was referring to in the staff comments.
So without that, it kind of makes it harder for us to make a decision if we don't know that information correct?
Well, that's one thing. It makes it a little difficult, I think, the more difficult for any new staff, although they've reduced the width of the proposed addition to eight feet. And I wanted, I just, I drew it out. I think I shared this with you in an email today.
Yes, we, my boss.
So this is something that I shared with them in the email. It just sort of demonstrates, here's the, the blue line is the regular setback, the red line is the 10-foot reduction, and the 8-foot extension, you can see a portion of it that I shaded in orange that comes closer than the 10-foot production to the front lot line. And that's the problem that I see today is it isn't entirely within the 10-foot limitation on setback. Which is what I tried to explain in my notes. I don't know if, I didn't get any questions from anybody, so I assume everybody understood it.
So you kind of drew that from the diagram and you got here.
Right. I was just, you know, I scaled it as best I could and showed that if you look at the dimensions on the site plan, you can see mathematically that it can't work. You know, it's mathematically impossible to put the whole thing at a 10-foot reduction in yard size. There's a portion of it that would comply, but it's a very small portion, and I don't think it's gonna satisfy what the Geron's want to have. What I was trying to explain to the Geron's was that the limited reduction is probably not the right variance to apply for. Should go for a practical difficulty variance instead, which doesn't have that 10-foot limitation. You'd have a few more criteria that you'd have to address, and it might be more difficult to pose your arguments for it, but at least it would allow you to get what this you want, which is an eight-foot wide, or at least an eight-foot wide addition to the front. You could even ask for more if you wanted to, because it's not limited to a 10-foot reduction. That's the problem that I saw first and foremost. Additionally, I saw that there was no lot coverage calculation, so I couldn't determine whether or not it was gonna exceed that. Those are the difficulties that I see with the application as proposed.
These are all the things that we have, if we don't have enough information, it makes it incredibly hard for us to decide on it, because we don't know what we're looking at completely.
Well, it sounds like what we're looking at at this point is something that doesn't fall within the rules of what we're about to approve for that. It sounds like maybe there's a, it's, from what I'm hearing is that there's a better way to go about this with a different request. And I don't think, I hate to send anybody away, I think it's probably who come to restructure or reposition themselves a little bit. And I'll addition, I'll add to, yeah, so a lot of what we have is based on dimensions of the home, square footages, or the square footage of your home, sometimes based on the square footage that you're adding on to it. We need to see those numbers and how those numbers compare against the ordinance. So if we don't have those numbers in front of us, it's very difficult to sort of have us come to a consensus on whether approving or disapproving an application. And it seems, it seems as though a practical difficulty application, though, as Mr. Lockstaff said, would be a little bit more challenging. You can certainly, you can capture all that you want in that envelope, whereas here, just looking at the diagram that you have on the plan, you may not have enough space physically to put this on the lot, and thus the practical difficulty application would be a better route for you to pursue for an appeal before us. I mean, I'm not, I don't wanna, I don't wanna belabor this anymore, but, and I would hate to, I'm not always a big fan of table your things like that, but our true options are, I think, either foat down the application and encourage them to pursue the practical difficulty route, or table it for them to provide facts and figures that proves that they're, you know, they have the dimensions required for this. And if they don't, then again, strongly recommend that they go the practical difficulty route.
Brian, did you recommend that they possibly do the other type of application?
Yes.
And so if they decide to do it today and they decide that they're gonna do the other type of application, do they have to incur a separate fee?
Well, that's a good question. I think, I think it's reasonable, I think it would be reasonable for the board if they, because there's information that you need that you don't have, you would be within your rights to table this application and then request that when they come back, they actually address all the criteria in a practical difficulty application as opposed to the limited reduction. And we can just simply, we can give it the same appeal number and just simply convert this to a practical difficulty application as opposed to the limited reduction of yard size. All of the supporting documentation that they provided would still be theoretically be applicable. Wouldn't waste that. That would still be okay. You'd just add some information to it that's missing and change the application to a practical difficulty. And let me tell you why that, I think that's the way to go. I think that's what I had mentioned to you earlier, is that a practical difficulty is defined as a case where the strict application of the dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property for which a variance is signed would both preclude a use of the property which is permitted in the zone and which is, in which, in which it is located, and would also result in a significant economic injury to the applicant. And it also has dimensional standards, relief from the dimensional standards, which include lot area, lot coverage, frontage, and setback, including buffer requirements. There's no limitation on the front yard setback of 10 feet. And you can also ask for, if you do the math, and the lot coverage doesn't come out to 20%, you could also build that into your request, relief from the 20% maximum lot coverage. That's why I think that would be a better application. And it's what I was trying to mention to you the first time, is that this would probably be the better route, based on the first time you had a wider addition that you were going to put on. Instead, you came back with the limited reduction and you narrowed the addition up, but it still doesn't mean it because of the angle of the house. And that's, that's the problem. And that's why I think tabling would be a good idea. It would also save you the cost of another application fee. So if we table this one for a month, if a month would be enough time to come back with those missing pieces of information, you'd actually have until the 20th, you'd only have the 20, which you could, you could either come back in December or January. So if you can't get it by the 20th of this, which would be hard to do, you could get it by the 20th of December, you come back for the January, you may not have to pay an additional fee, and we just convert that appeal to a practical difficulty. Does that make sense?
Excuse me. And there is any list of the rest of the information you need or?
Yes, I can provide you with a list of the information.
We have, we get the part months, we get the, for the, for the, and everything in order. Where basically you need is the size of what is built, how much more center it is built.
Right. So your existing house, the footprint of your existing house, including all attached stairs, decks, anything that's attached to your existing house, because it's not in the shore landing zone, you don't have to do total lot coverage, which would include driveways, patios, and all that nature. You'd just be looking for your buildings all. The amount of square footage of that building compared to the square footage of your entire lot all. And that percentage can't exceed 20% if, if you're proposing, that includes what you're proposing to add to the structure. So if you're adding something to that structure, it exceeds 20%, you'll need to ask for relief from that 20% lot coverage number, as well as the setback and the amount of setback reduction. That's, and then the other hard part though is that you have to, you have to prove that practical difficulty, that there's going to be some kind of economic, significant economic injury to you without having the benefit of this appeal with this variance.
So I'll add to that real quick. That would be your best option, because right now with the limited, the limited reduction in yard size application, it's not speaking for the board, but it's highly doubtful that this would be able to pass right now. And the practical difficulty may be your best route.
Two and three can't be passed right now.
Right. Yeah, questions two and three, we don't have enough information, like Brian was saying, the dimensions and so on. So if, if we'll, we'll table this, we can, we can just go ahead and table this very quickly with permission from the applicant or anything.
Yeah.
It's his choice. Okay. So if, if you- So if, if you, if you choose to table this until next month or January, and work with Brian, it'll be a lot, I think, a lot easier for you coming back.
Okay. No, that's, thank you for the recommendation, but just to say, no, right now, you know, to give me the opportunity to try to see if we can work around, you know, and send all the information you need.
So I guess at this time, would you like to table this application?
Well, before we go there.
Oh, sorry. That's my...
Mr. Longstaff, you've kind of alluded to the fact, I would say, that you're picking up number four on practical difficulty in some of your comments here? There's no other feasible alternative?
I'm sorry, you lost me.
We're looking at practical difficulty, number four. No other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance? By your comments about them applying for this and things, were sort of satisfying the fact that there is no other feasible alternative other than the variance that you're suggesting?
I don't know that I would go there just yet. I think...
Well, it's going to be a question, that's the only thing. I don't want to send it down the road or something.
Well, I mean, we're not, we're not hearing that, Karen.
I understand that, but we are...
You're going to have to weigh it on the virtue of their response to that question. I don't think you can go there. You can, you can think about it, but I don't think that's something that you can decide tonight, because they haven't come back with their response to this.
No, my question is to, with your recommendation that they go there, some of your comments kind of alluded to the fact it's the way to go. I know we're not looking at it yet, but I just want to make sure we kind of address that a little bit going in.
Let me, let me try to say it this way. It isn't eligible for the limited reduction of yard size, okay? I don't know what it is eligible for. If they want to stay with the design that they presented, it can't work with the limited reduction. I'm not saying it can work with the practical difficulty, but I can tell you it doesn't work with the limited reduction. So yeah, maybe the practical difficulty is the only way to go, I just don't know that. Or, they could reduce the dimensions on what they want to build, shorten it up to about four feet by four feet, and that would work, but is that feasible or practical, or is that what they want? I don't know. It's, I can't design it for them. All I can do is say, it isn't going to work with the limited reduction, therefore, the only other thing that's available is practical difficulty. I don't know if that's going to work either, that's, that's up to damage to show.
But no, I'm not asking that, we're, we're saying get the practical difficulty.
I know, but you're, you're asking me to say that that's the only, I'm not sure that's...
I'm asking you to just kind of give us, in your opinion, opinion, this is the only alternative, it's not going to fit this one.
It's not the only alternative, it's another alternative.
Other than them changing the plan?
That's what I'm saying. I can't, they can't do the limited reduction. I don't know what else they can do. This is the only other available variance where it doesn't have those limitations. That's all I'm saying. I'm not sure that it's the only thing they can do. As we've said before, they could not do it at all. But is that what they want? That's not what they're asking for, they're asking for an eight-foot wide thing, so it depends on what they come back with, I really can't. I don't want to record it saying that's the only thing, because it isn't.
No, I'm not asking you to do that, I was just asking, you know, that there's...
I misunderstood, because it sort of sounded like you were asking me to say...
Asking you if we could, because the appeal that you thought would be the one that they're most likely to get recommendations on.
Well, yeah, based on, based on what they've got into this one, that one, again, it won't work in this one. So that's the only other one there is.
That's all I was asking, that's was the only option.
Okay. But I'm not going to say that it meets that criteria.
I was asking you to do that, but you were just making a recommendation at this, so I was looking at it that way. So we can table it for you if you want to table it, but I would strongly suggest just look at number four and have that addressed sufficiently if you can, on the practical difficulty when you come back, just to make sure that you're presenting information to us, that there is no other feasible alternative, that's the hardest one to get by on that appeal.
Okay.
Thank you very much for giving it to me.
Mr. Chair, I will send you by email all of the questions that you need to answer and the application form that you need to complete, so that when you, when you come back, you'll see everything that you need to provide, where I think to answer the questions that we miss here. Is that, is that acceptable?
Yes, well, just, thank you very much, and here's one question, you know, if any suggestions, you know, like you say, if we present ten in the beginning, then eight, is any recommendation to you say, look, between number eight, maybe not four by four, but is any...
Mr. Longstaff works with people pretty well to try to help him as much as he can, so he's already done some work for you, been looking at some things, so I think we might be able to help you out with those. But I would strongly recommend, get it together as to what you completely want, what's your end game, this is what I want to have, and this is what I could accept. Okay, go back.
Mr. Chair, and just to clarify, I'm not sure if I, maybe I misunderstood what you were saying, but the board won't give you that, you know, those options. They're going to look at what you present, they're not going to redesign your project for you. Like, if I can't get A, can I get B? They're not able to do that. So you need to, you need to do your best to see if your design and your responses will, you know, meet the, demonstrate that you've met these criteria. I can help you, you know, in understanding and interpreting that criteria to your project, I certainly can help you do that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you helping.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm saying, get, get what you really, really want, and what you can, the ego be okay with. Because that's what you need to bring to us, you need to give us as much information as you can to present that to us, so we know you've looked at any alternatives and everything, and this is the only option you have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a motion to table.
I'll move to table application number 2652.
Yep. 2652.
Is there a second?
Second.
Follows your favor. Thank you. Mr. Longstaff will just change it, we'll keep the same appeal number and everything for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Appeal number 2653, limited reduction of yard size, residential appeal by William and Linda Thomas, 27 County Road, assessors map R015, lot 083. Can you please, then, rename your address? What can I do?
Yes, Bill of Linda Thomas, where the bar of voice I've got, I remember, been there since 89, 87, and this has been our home for a long time. We applied for permit to put the addition on, on the west side of the building, back in, and that was three, three feet and nine inches over the, over the 50-foot setback in the front, and they granted us that permit at that time.
What are you looking to do now?
I'm looking to put a two-car garage, all the neighbors in the community have two-car garages, and the garage that we have now is extremely unsafe. It's a one-car garage, it almost collapsed a couple years ago from snow load, and it's, it serves its usual purposes in that area.
You don't have any pictures, right?
What's that on?
You don't have any pictures or anything of this?
Um, did I set some pictures in with the fire?
This is the garage? This is the garage?
Yeah, I think it's, I think you have pictures there.
Just trying to figure out what that, that picture down through the roof, that's the garage itself?
Ah, yes, yes. And you can see that between the snow loads and the, and the age of it, just on slab, the slab is completely disintegrating underneath it, and...
Is that what the top picture is? I'm trying to figure out what the top picture is.
Yeah.
That's a slab inside the garage?
Ah, yes, that's where that's broken away, and it's just from, it wasn't, it wasn't properly done back in 1960, so that's not great.
Mr. Longstaff, do you need me to add? Stop talking, Karen.
Yeah, the appellant, explaining wants to do a 24-by-30 foot garage to replace the existing garage. He provided a partial survey by Steve Ross that demonstrates the both-side yard setback that he's asking for. What wasn't clear to me, based on the sketches and the information in the application, was whether or not both the garage and the front entry that he wants to construct both meet the 50-foot setback, and that's why I mentioned that. There wasn't any mention of a reduction of yard size for the front portions of that. It's another one of these situations where I think because of the angle of the structure versus the angle of the property line, there may be a problem there, and it's just not clearly spelled out on Mr. Ross's survey, which is really the only official survey document in here. I wish it just included survey dimensions for all of the additions that the applicant wishes to make to the structure. And that's why I, I simply mentioned in the staff comments that you may want to just condition the approval that, you know, they need to demonstrate that it clearly will meet that before we can issue a permit to build, because I don't have that information here. We have the applicant's testimony that it does, but I don't know that.
I have copies of all, of all previous permits back in 93, and it...
I examined the file and I still did not find proof of...
I think, I think where the confusion lies, if I can demonstrate on the print...
Sure.
I just need to speak a little louder. I think the confusion lies, this was back in 91, this was in 93.
Go the other way.
Somewhere along the line, during this, this, this is actually the other way.
That's what I found.
It's actually flipped over somehow. And Steve Ross said that, where I was setting back an additional two feet offset, because I got a meter coming right there.
For the garage.
Yes, that, that my house was in compliance, here an additional two feet, so he said, he measured out, it was like 58 feet, something like that, and he says, there's no sense in me doing any survey and charging extra money for the survey. So somehow, I think, in the print, back from 91, that's what we do.
But what about this front entrance that you want to build on your, on your house? Because that's now going this way, if your front corner is at 50 or 50 and a little change there, is that 50 feet something to the front corner from the property line of the house? If that's going in this direction, then how, how would this part be 50 feet from the house, if it's angling in towards the front?
The addition is up back here, right? And from the far corner, the road is, 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 that corner is off the dam, so now you're going to look at this being turned that way, and that comes right across there, and that's an existing deck that's been there since Apple was built. All we're doing is putting a roof over it, we're not enclosing it, we're just, I mean, I get medicine once a week, and I need the medicine not to be outside in weather.
Well, that's fine, and all I need, all I need to issue the permit is proof that that's 50 feet from, because it's fine if you had a grandfather deck on, on the house, but now when you put a roof over it, that's a new piece of structure attached to the house, that also has to meet setbacks. That's all I'm saying. If you can demonstrate to me that that does meet the setbacks, prove positive, and I'm good.
Well, the fact that this is 50, 58 feet plus, minus the two feet, is still within the criteria of the 50, 50...
Maybe, but you've said yourself, this is turned this way, not this way, this way. That's getting closer to the property line. That's what I'm trying to demonstrate.
What's concerning is approving this on the contingent of what if it doesn't meet the setback? Can we not do this? Fortunately, if we approve this with the contingency of him meeting a setback, that's very restrictive, because then he can't come back.
If he's, if they're only asking for the side, the relief on the side for the garage, I think you can approve that, no problem. If he's going to meet the, the front setback on the porch, that's not even a zoning board issue, so you don't even really have to concern. I just wanted to bring that up, because he's exactly right, that's, that's why it's, it's, it's reversed, it's turned in a reverse direction.
So he doesn't end up meeting a setback if he wanted to make a separate application to do the roof?
Potentially, yeah.
If you want to, but if we...
It just seems like we don't have enough information. But it's unfortunate that you've come this far, and we still don't have that information, I feel like.
I think you need to, I think you need, the board needs to satisfy itself that the information that's provided on Steve Ross's survey, and the testimony... I know. This is the survey, the one that has a survey stamp on it, and it says Steve Ross, PLS. So it's showing the side, the requested side relief there, he's got the dimension, okay? It's 13.16 feet to the nearest corner of that garage. And so that, that is within the five-foot setback reduction that's allowed on this type of appeal. You've heard testimony from the appellant that Mr. Ross did not bother to provide a dimension on the front, because it was already more than 50 feet from the road. Am I stating that correctly?
It was, and he said there was, we were going for a variance, and he said, if I, if I put an application in for more, the distance I had to, pay more money for a survey of the front, that all of the existing property is compliance, well, with the zoning board of deals of the addition in 93, now the whole building is compliance. Now, if you draw a line straight across that, knowing that that was compliance, that puts that porch in compliance as well.
But how did we get to the point where someone flipped this?
I have no idea.
It was a mortgage law inspection.
Oh, same.
Real estate bro, right?
Fixes it, so I don't think this is the applicant's problem.
It's a survey, a real survey.
But the addition is 18 feet long, and by the time you angle that across, that, that, there's no, you know, the line goes outside, and it's an existing deck that was there, and all of, and I have to have some place to put my medicine that I get once a week, and it's not enclosing it or anything, and it's, and it's the safety reason that the, the deck gets slippery, and, you know, and it's, you know, it's, this is 50 feet, you know, we're not talking, you know, like 15 feet, we're talking 50.
The cover is totally a reasonable request, I think what's confusing is right now is that part of this application today, because I would also, again, if you do have to come back and find out, oh, you know what, the deck doesn't meet the setback, I need to do this whole process again, or you can do it all in one shot. Or you can go and just do the side today and find out if maybe it is compliant or not. Without those measurements, I think we don't know.
So one thing we could do is, and as you suggested, approve it with contingencies? The contingency that, assuming that the front porch is within setbacks, and if that's the case, then it's a done deal, it's okay. If it's not, are they still allowed to build the garage?
If you put, if you put conditions on your roof, and they don't meet those conditions...
And the entire...
Then I can't give them a permit.
Right. Gotcha.
But if you condition the approval tonight, and they do meet those conditions, then I'm initially...
We'll put the cartway before the horse here, people. We even got to the question, Shane.
Well, I don't know what I'm...
We don't know if we're going to constitutionally approve this.
Yep, it's true, it's true, we're still on staff comments.
Are there any letters or... We've had some questions, I'm just going to open, see if anyone can...
Yeah, let me state this on the survey, I'll move that.
The front of the house had to be surveyed when we went to the zoning unit, it was before.
Ma'am, if you wouldn't mind, if you want to share with the board, if you wouldn't mind, going to the podium, that would be great.
That's okay.
I don't, I don't know, I...
We just need to have it on, we just need to have it on the record.
No.
On when we're talking back to the audience.
I'm just, I just said that I went to, I went downstairs, I don't know where I went today, I went to your office.
Downstairs.
And I photocopied all those papers though, for every document.
Yeah, I've got to have a lot of survey.
Okay, thanks.
That's all we're still.
We'll just have Steve come out.
Yeah, I mean, if he could, if he could just shoot that one other dimension and show that that house all the way down meets the setback, or whatever was approved at the time. If it's, if you're saying that that porch was part of the approval first for the addition, I'm assuming we came to the zoning board for the addition, is that what I'm hearing? That's what we-
The porch was there.
Then we can, we'll have to have you move. Sorry.
I'm just trying to clarify.
On the Thomas, on Bill's wife, on Forty-Seventh County Road, and ready moved Buxton.
The porch was there.
The porch was there-
It's always been there.
When the gentleman built the house. It was a wheelchair ramp. I grew up in this town, and I always felt bad for the people that lived in this house. It was the tiniest house in the Thomas Goddard, with wheelchair-
That's somewhere I'd prefer.
This guy came home from work one day and said, guess what I did on my way home? He put a deposit on the house.
With two kids you had no, I mean-
We had one child.
One income?
One child. One child.
Well, at that time, yes, yes.
So anyway, the porch that is there is the porch that was there when the wheelchair ramp was there. But when we moved in, the previous owner took the ramp down.
I love that.
So the porch is there, we're not, he doesn't want to put, you don't want to put the roof over the stairs. You're just putting it over.
And now, if I did do over the stairs, then I definitely would agree with you, Brian, that I would definitely need to demonstrate that.
But we'll just, we'll just have Steve come out.
But it's, we're only talking, we're only talking four feet out, an extension out, and the length of the deck, which is about eight feet long, just enough to get my medicine undercover. I mean, this is, you know, almost five thousand dollar a week medicine that I get.
And it came today, and it comes with three ice packs. And by the time I got there today, the ice packs had already, even as cold as it was today, the ice packs had-
I want to apologize, I feel bad. This must be frustrating for you guys, that you came this far tonight to your, today to find-
But it's, it's where the, where the garage is like fifty-eight feet, there's no way possible that that can even be close. I mean, yes, the steps, I agree, but we're not putting any roof over the porch. And as you can see, it gives that place dimensions, you know, with that, we've got a little roof canopy, it just, you know, gives a little bit of style. Right now, you can tell it's nineteen sixty home, with a one car garage.
I think I would hate to approve this with the contingency of it being within the bright footage, and it ended up not being. And so I, I mean, I think your best bet might be trying to just confirm that it is, and then reflect the application to include that.
So do we have to come back to the zoning board of deals?
Well, yeah, what would happen, what would happen is we do the same thing we just did, we would basically table it. That's a conundrum, because we don't know, we don't have that actual information.
Can we just forget about the porch? Just forget about the porch altogether?
Well, no, and I don't want you to come through this procedure to give up something that you certainly need. You necessarily deserve this. I mean, as a lesson, you deserve to deserve that.
But I think it just gets to be all-
Right, and I understand that, and that's-
I can't do that, John. So you need to, we have stress.
I mean, if we were talking, you know, the ten-foot setback with comments, but it's fifty feet, and I don't know if you know, county rules, but they're supposed to go thirty-five, and they go sixty. I mean, it's not desperate.
Here's, here's a suggestion, if I can make one.
Sure.
Why, what harm would it do for you to amend your application right here, right now with the board, and say you're requesting a ten-foot reduction of the front yard size, whether or not you needed it, as new material? They can approve it.
We need numbers. I, I, okay.
No, I'm just, hey, it's, it's a suggestion, you can, you can fill it out. I just, I'm just suggesting, you have applicants here who are clearly pretty convinced that they do need the setback, it's just not demonstrated. That's the fifty-foot setback. They allow to have a forty-foot setback as part of the limited reduction of yard size. They may not need that.
But you can allow that sort of wiggle of force.
I mean, they're asking, it doesn't mean they have to build to forty feet. So they're asking for that relief if they decide to change their design, or that the porch roof that they want to put over their deck is, is clearly not any closer than forty feet. Maybe it's only fifty or forty-nine feet. At least you've given them the approval, and I'm making assumptions that he would approve it, I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, but I'm just saying, that would prevent them from having to come back, and then when they do the building permit application, we can sort all of that out.
How are you going to amend the application? You're willing to amend that application?
I'm putting it out there to the board. I'm not willing to do anything. It's, I'm throwing it out there as something you could do.
We can amend their application.
We can allow them to amend their application. So would they, would they do what we do?
No, we are not, we can't amend that.
No, they could, they could ask you, based on, based on the lack of evidence that, that, based on an alleged lack of evidence, if you're more comfortable saying, we need to build something in for that, then they could, in the record, amend their application to include a front yard size. I'm just throwing it out there as a way to resolve this issue. They don't then have to come back to the board, they don't then have to, at this point, hire Steve Ross to come back with another complaint. At some point, we'll have to-
The biggest issue that I have, and it always has biggest issue, is I have property markers on the corner of my lots. They're not the fifty-foot setback law. The setback law is the right way we have to get from the county commission, and that puts it another six feet beyond that, beyond my stakes. So you want the fifty feet from the right way of the property, and the, and the road can go seventy-five feet anywhere within that fifty-foot right away. And it just happened to be at our house, it just sweeps close to the fifty-foot setback. And, and you don't take boundary lines, you don't take, the only thing you take is county, the seventy-five foot right away. And the only way that a common person can find that out is going into the county and surveying what the, how the road is placed within that seventy-five foot boundary line. And I never, never understood that, is why do they have a center of the road requirement? And then everybody would be, you know, depends on how that road goes through that lot, everybody would be sent back similar to the relationship to the road. I mean, I just, I just think that that's unreasonable.
Let me ask you the question. Are you willing to amend your application to a lot flat on the ten feet? That would make it so that you don't have to have Mr. Ross come back and do another survey, Mr. Longstaff can work with you, we can put conditions in there, whether we appeal, whether we approve or deny it. Do you want us to hear it? We'll hear it tonight.
Yeah, we'll save one more, we're only have three hundred and fifty dollars.
Do you want to do that?
I, I, you have to get the approval for the, for the, for the board.
How do we need to put this on the record?
Well, you need to do, you have a motion.
You will have to hear another case, though.
A motion to?
To approve amendment to the application.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve amendment to the application?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the application.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of the improvement to the, uh, yeah? Application? Opposed? It's quarter one passes. Okay? We'll go over that. You're going to be able to make over that.
So the, so the, can I get you a permit for the, the addition of the garage to this even?
We're just, we're just considering everything now. We've added that in, so you've got one of the pieces added in that Mr. Longstaff was concerned about, we've now addressed that. So now we move over the questions and looks to see if we're going to be able to approve your appeal or not. Okay? You can sit back down if you want, they're fine. Yep.
It's a motion to amend, to make the venue to be sealed, but it's a scheme.
Yes. Any more on that?
The ten feet. Yeah, the ten, unfortunately, unfortunately.
That'll give them a lot of room.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody's on the same page now, so I think we can proceed. And we've already had a bunch of questions from the board. We can really go off the questions, yeah, but you have all of the questions with you now, and just give your responses as you have them written, as we go over them. The existing building or structure on the lot for which the limited reduction of yard size is requested was not erected prior to July third, nineteen ninety-one, or the lot is vacant, non-conforming a lot of record?
It was constructed in nineteen sixty, and it's desperate needs and repair. It's cracked and powdering the foundation, and it's, with the heavy snow load, has done substantial damage, and it's unsafe. The old bed door is about ready to collapse in many times, and all of my neighbors have two car garages, and I have only a single car garage.
Question two, the requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner of the, or the occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties are utilized in the zoning district?
The side setbacks are right now thirteen point one, and we're moving it over to accommodate a twenty-four foot garage, on width of the garage, and also constructing a, I said nine by five, but it's more like seat by four, actual dimensions.
Essentially, what we're asking you on this one, sir, is just, is it reasonably necessary to permit the owner or the occupant to use your property as people around you were using their properties?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need for you from that.
I mean, we were in two different spots on the application.
Question three, due to the physical features of the lot and the location of existing structures on the lot, it would be practical to construct the proposed expansion enlargement or new, it would not be practical to construct the proposed enlargement expansion of new structure in accordance with the currently applicable yard size requirements? You've already answered that at length, so, and in case any, any of us has any other questions about that, I feel he's answered that at length. The impacts and effects of the enlargement, expansion, rebuilding or structure on the existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of a building structure which conforms to the yard size requirements. Again, we're just looking for effects and impacts, if yours is going to be-
It's staying within the community, you know, in fact, architecturally, I don't even know, you know, build it where it's still of what I have existing structure.
Okay, thank you. You have advanced construction, enlargement, expansion, building or structure for which limited reduction of yard size is requested, so the board is not considering an after-the-fact application?
I have nothing to think of.
Okay. Mr. Longstaff, I think I asked already, you didn't have your letters on this?
No, we didn't.
Coming up to the public hearing, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this? None, opposed to the public hearing?
Just mention that there is indication that they've got, they've contacted their neighbors, that there didn't seem to be any opposition.
Yeah, Cleo Nelson, which would be inviting property, he said, no, no, you'll bring on the line. I'm actually ten feet plus away from the front, from what I, from what I construct.
Any questions from the board? I think we've asked, we've had a question already, but we're all set, there's the most of other questions here at this point. I have no further questions. Well, let's go down through the questions, and we'll go up and down. The existing building or structure on the lot for which the limited reduction of yard size is requested were erected prior to July third, nineteen ninety-one, or the lot is vacant, non-conforming a lot of record? We, I do find some findings of fact here for Mr. Longstaff, so please just nod a yes or a no. Please just base it upon findings and information you've gone. I won't start down with the new guy again, I stopped down with someone.
Actually, the town records will look like an applicant has shown the house was built and things.
Looked bad.
Looked bad. Looked bad.
Yeah, I mean, substantially, you've told us that it was built prior to the town records, Mr. Longstaff established that, so I think we're good on that one. All in favor of one being met? Genanous. Two, the requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner or other similar properties are utilized in the zoning district. Start down the same again, please.
Right, you guys are going to be connecting your garage to your house now, right?
Yes.
A lot nicer than the war. And so, I mean, you're going to be, have a much better use of it, and it's going to come for people to have the now, the connection there, and to also have, I mean, we also need to address to have a group over their, their entranceway as well.
It's going to be a little complicated to tie the two roofs together, because of the elevation of the property.
We're just going through staff comments now for the board. We're all set with whatever you've given us.
All right.
Yeah, we just need to get ourselves.
She asked.
She did, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to let her know, we don't, we don't really need to hear from you if you want to, you can definitely fight them, but we're just going through our findings of that at this point.
Yeah, I mean, this, you're, you're modifying the home that's similar to other homes in the area, and making it easier as, as, you know, health issues progress, there's time to be easier to go into the house, the garage, so don't have to walk outside for it.
I think the soundproofing is perfectly reasonable, and it performs with the rest of the I.
I agree, I believe that the additional protection will be very helpful when receiving the medication.
Yeah, like we've already addressed the applicant, I mean, they told us the smallest houses in the area, it's one of the smallest lots, it's difficult. We've gotten information, basically, just to, you folks need to have the roof over the porch, I mean, over the deck, excuse me, don't want to call it porch, over the deck for medical reasons and things, so I think you're definitely just using it like anybody else with the neighborhood for a smaller house, and just trying to enjoy it in the same manner as others.
All in favor of two being met?
Three, due to the physical features of the lot and the location of existing structures on the lot, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement, or new structure in accordance with the currently applicable yard size requirements?
We've discussed the physical features of the lot, and discussed that we really don't want to give up, we're trying to build on the lot, that's already, and placing it is something better, and we're just going to put a roof over our entranceway that's already there.
They came from the driveway on the opposite side of how, or they came from the garage on the opposite side of the house, because that's not where the driveway is, so it's the only logical location for that.
I agree, I think this is the most, the least impactful as far as changing the property, or the most reasonable accommodation to make this work.
I agree, as noted in their comments, would provide straight edge issues.
And we've addressed the yard size at length here. I don't know how the lot got flipped, that doesn't make any sense to me, but we're certainly, this is the only way to do it, this is the only thing folks can do. You're, you're trying to work with us, you're trying to do what you need to do, work within the guidelines, we've already established that you're willing to go a little bit further with asking for the amended application to the appeal, so I think three has been met. All those in favor of three being met? Genanous. Four, the impact effects of the enlargement, expansion, or new building or structure on existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of a building or structure which conforms to the yard size requirement.
Right, I mean, this is a totally normal addition that they want to do, because of the physical features of their lot, they have to come up for us.
Constructing this, we'll bring it, I won't say to conform with this on a criteria here, but it'll be very similar to other homes in the area.
Yeah, I think this is just going to establish further continuity of designs.
As the applicant stated, it's going to make the house more visually appealing, the other structures are already falling, falling down, we've got pictures of those, which we have for the structure, as well as the roof and the snow, it's going to be on it, so they're bringing this up so it won't basically fall down and be a big distraction in the area, so they're definitely trying to improve the structure of the lot. I think that's great. All in favor of four being met? Genanous. Five, the applicant has not commenced construction, enlargement, expansion, building or structure for which the limited reduction of yard size is requested, so that the board of appeals is not considering an after-the-fact application. It's pretty self-explanatory, it's going through the lines.
Right, the applicant has specified that he's not going to-
Concurrently, no.
I have no reason to believe that he began the instructions, so.
Same here. Yeah, you told us, Jim, you haven't started construction, taken it out of your word, and knowing that you haven't done that, this is met. All in favor of five being met? Genanous. Do I have a motion?
On the move to approve appeal number twenty-six fifty-
On the move to approve appeal, the 2653 has amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. All set. You're welcome. Thank you for working with us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any zoning board comments? Mr. Longstaff, do you have anything that's coming up, any trainings or anything like that, what's going on? We're getting a new member, I know a new member we had, the planning board.
And he resigned from the planning board.
Okay.
So, so we, they're still looking for, we're still looking for another member.
So.
It'd seem to be two, two members, I guess.
Three. You've got to have a three.
After seven.
Mr. Blaze, myself.
Public secretary.
So he signed up for planning, he, she signed up for planning board, and then he was on.
He had been, he signed up for a number of, you know, volunteered for a number of committees, he was appointed to the planning board before the first meeting, his courtesy staff asked if you'd like to meet with them, so they could discuss planning board procedures, and shut up for meetings, and I should probably tell you I'm, I'm designing, so he didn't, he didn't even make the first meeting.
What is the process when someone needs approval to be on the zoning board of appeals, and then goes to the planning board, has to go back to the council to be approved again, I would assume, but how does, how does that actually happen, when someone's already put on one board and then is transferred to another? Just the council, the reader? He affirms him on the new board?
Yeah, but then, that wasn't the case with this one. I thought he was already approved for zoning board. You know, he had, he had filled out his paper for volunteering for a number of.
So council had approved him for zoning board?
Had been approved for zoning board, they appointed him to planning, without my, without my understanding that they were going to do. It was discussed, and he had indicated to me that he, he wanted to do his own, although he had volunteered for a number of them. So I don't know if the same applicant would be interested in attending the zoning board or being appointed to zoning board, I don't know. The reason that he didn't continue with the planning board was because they appointed him to a board that he actually didn't want to serve on, although he had checked that off on his application. So I guess the less of large is if you're going to volunteer, be specific on which board you might volunteer for, and because apparently that would be the case.
I, I really don't know. We had any conversations. Speaking of that, we have one more meeting before I'm termed off. Is it prudent to, do you try, no, is it prudent to try to basically establish the new board before December? We'll be no going into January, where we have more people here in case someone's going to miss a December meeting, so we have the majority of the folks here to pick up the new chair and vice chair.
I don't really, yeah, I guess you can do that.
I didn't know if you could do it, I want that, like that.
It just says.
I just want to make sure we have enough people, with December and holidays and stuff, I know people have different activities, I feel we could, if we can do it now, let's just get it done.
The members shall annually elect one of the members' chairmen to preside at all meetings of the board, annually, so.
Doesn't have it.
So we did, we already did it in 2019, or 2018, so I would assume probably everybody needs to be in 2019.
Okay.
That would be my interpretation, I don't know.
No, I know going in before, we always had it in December, I think, we didn't have any chair in 2018.
We only did 2018, we didn't table it.
Yeah, I think Mr. Maroon had a meeting or something like that, so we, that was my question, because normally it's done at the end of the year.
It was on, it was on the agenda for the 9th of the year, January, and I think we have to do it in December, because, what was it?
No, there was a couple, there was a couple months we had people miss, yeah.
I, I think, I, I don't know that it would be a problem if you wanted to do it in December, I don't know that that would be a problem.
We just figure having it done going into December, if we have people that are missing, or if we had no appeals, I think we all have one properly.
If you would like to make sure that that's on the agenda, I would certainly say that you put it right into Dorian, say, your, your best chair, you're requesting that that be an agenda item, go forward.
Okay.
That makes sense.
I know Miss Shupas suggested she wanted to apply for the chair, I don't know what your thoughts are on that? If you want to apply for it as well?
Maybe she did.
Oh.
I'm responsible.
So should we make a motion to have it on the agenda for next month as to who wants to be the chair and then blow on it?
Yeah, we could do it in December, all at the same time.
Let's just add this in action, I'm, you're not telling me yes or no, I know Miss Shup wants to do it. Yes or no?
I mean, if nominated, if voted, I'll do it.
I think that's the whole key, is that the slate needs to be nominated from the board, so.
Well, they have it, folks.
Whether Miss Shup or Mr. Bieber wants to do it, if they're not nominated.
It's a matter of who thinks should do it, or who you think should do it.
That's right.
To be fair.
I got nominated without asking, so, just saying. I know two people want to do it now, so I would put both their names on the agenda for next month, and we can have a vote on it against the rest of the board, and hopefully Mr. Blaze can join us as well in December, and it'll give the rest of the board a month to think about it, and then we'll come up with a nomination at the December meeting, and by the end of December, the end of the December meeting, I would be walking with the bachelor. So, any other questions? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Any second. Who wants to state that?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous. Nice evening, everybody.
Thank you. You want to hold on to the old one?